All right, we will call the Georgetown Scott County Planning Commission to order for the January 12th, 2023 meeting. We need to first approve the December invoices. I hope that each of you all have at least looked those over. I'll take a emotion and a second. Motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Garrett.
My second.
Who is that?
Me.
Second by Mr. Stone. All in favor? The approval passes. Approval of the December 8th minutes. So move. Mr. Garrett?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. All in favor? All right, and those are approved. And the approval of the January 12th agenda. We've already talked about the three postponements. Is there any additions or changes we need to make to it? Okay. So the agenda will be as read there. Have a take a motion?
I'm like a motion.
Mr. Vest?
Second.
And Mr. Garrett seconded. All in favor? Say aye. We've already gone over the items for postponement or withdrawal, but I'll state them again. FSP 2022-47, the Joanne Warner property, has been postponed. PDP 2022-44, Worldwide Equipment, has been postponed. And then yesterday, we got a request from Big Pine Land, which is item number ZMA 2022-57, that they wish to postpone. And so those three items have been postponed. So next item on our agenda is the discussion of the urban service boundary. And that needs to be a public hearing. So I will open this meeting to a public hearing to hear from Matt about the urban service boundary.
Thank you. So I guess just in summary, you all have, you received a copy of this handout in your packet. And then I put a revised one, and it's only minor revisions, up at the desk today. The only changes are on the fourth page, on the very back, and they're in bold. On the advice of Charlie, we changed, on items seven and eight, we changed some shalls to should. And on number, item number nine, we changed the word unnecessary to unreasonable. But other than that, you know, we sort of, well, I'll address it here in just a second. So just as some background, the urban service boundary is a, is a planning tool that we use as part of our comprehensive plan and our land use planning here in Scott County to sort of control and manage some of the growth associated with our three municipalities. So the idea being that, you know, we can, we can look ahead at, you know, our population projections and see how much land we might need in our urban areas to accommodate the growth that we're expecting. We can plan for that growth in a, in a sort of a manageable way, so that as communities, you know, we can make best use of our resources, whether that's, you know, extending sewer lines, providing adequate locations for police and fire, things of that nature. So that's sort of why we use an urban service boundary. It's to sort of help us manage that growth, so it doesn't, you know, grow in, our cities do not grow in inefficient way. That, that sort of wastes some resources. So the first urban service boundary that we're going to look at here today with our hearing is, is the city of Sadieville. And, you know, you can see a map here on, on the screen. Commissioners, you all should have copies of this map as well. But we are proposing a reduction in the urban service boundary from the 2017 comprehensive plan. We've got some statistics here in your handouts that should help you to understand what, what our purpose was in, in proposing a reduction of the urban service boundary. The city limits currently are, are about 725 acres. The city of Sadieville is about 320 people as of the 2020 census. And between 2010 and 2020, the city grew at about a half percent a year annually, as far as the population. Average household size is about 2.41 people per unit. And then there are about 54 housing units that have preliminary approval and are waiting on final development plan approval with the, the property that Mr. Strunk under to begin a couple of years back. So there are some, there's some flexibility already in the city as far as units that are already approved. When we look and compare the two urban service boundaries, the 2017 urban service boundary was about 3,600 acres in size. You know, as far as the future land use map at that time, over 2,500 acres of that was planned for residential uses. Some of our recent development trends show that developers are, are looking at developing at about four and a half units per acre, sort of on average. And so when we, when we calculate out how many, you know, how many people that space, that 2,500 acres could accommodate based on the, the number of units per acre and the average number of people per household, you know, that 2017 urban service boundary could have accommodated up to, you know, almost 28,000 people, which would have represented tremendous growth for that community. But if we want to talk about, you know, managing that growth and, and sort of focusing it on sort of building from the inside out, it seemed prudent to us that we sort of bring that back into the areas that the, that the city is focusing on currently. So we are recommending reducing the urban service boundary to 1,500 acres, which would still be, you know, more than double the size of the current city limits. Some very preliminary numbers as far as the amount of acreage we're looking to plan for residential would be about 980. And, and that would allow the city to still grow a considerable amount, you know, should that entire area get built out to about 10,000 people. So I did also want to note, you know, when we look at the Sadieville urban service boundary, we did want to make sure that we included this area, it's very hard to point at, but sort of where Porter Road intersects with US 25, there is a state project in the six-year plan to sort of reroute that, how those, how 32 and 25 intersect and sort of straighten that out. So there's not like a zigzag that where you have to get onto 25 to get back to 32 as you come in towards Sadieville. And so we wanted to make sure that that area was included still in the, in the urban service boundary, just because, you know, once that project happens, it represents, you know, an area of potential growth for that city, whether that be commercial or, or residential uses.
It'll be a straight shot.
It'll be, it'll be a little bit more, it'll eventually tie back in with the existing 32, probably somewhere around the fire station, I think. Obviously, it's still in the very early stages, they've not done like a finalized design yet, so it's hard to tell. But that's sort of what they're thinking. I think they did a, a survey online a couple of years ago, kind of looking at some options for that intersection, whether a roundabout would work better and things of that nature, or, or stop sign still.
Like three different plans in different areas. And around that, that was not what.
I think, I think it would make sense, but.
Yeah, you could.
Yeah. So that's, that's the Sadieville urban service boundary. We did meet with, with Dan and the mayor, Rick, and Rick Hostetler, and some of the property owners that own property around the exit 136 interchange, just to make sure that they were comfortable with what we were proposing. And we did get some positive feedback there. But if you all had any questions about Sadieville, I'd be happy to discuss that now, otherwise I can move on to, to stamping ground.
Anybody in the audience have any questions about Sadieville? Okay, let's move on to stamping ground.
Well, when I get, you mentioned it goes out to, does it go all the way out to the highway?
Uh, sorry.
We are annexed to Love's.
Yes. Basically, so, so you can see, yeah. This, this part here, where it can even extend it out down toward the road. That, that's actually also the city limits as well. But yes, it does include, any of the areas that are already inside the city limits are also included in the urban service boundary.
Okay. Yeah, I have a little bit more. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Stamping ground, there, there's some similarities, just in, in that the, the stamping ground urban service boundary was also very large compared to the, the city's, you know, physical size as well as population. So we are, as you can see, we're proposing a reduction in the urban service boundary for, for stamping ground as well, and kind of trying to zero in some of the focus as far as future development along both Main Street and, and maybe sort of Seabree Road and Woodlake, yeah, Woodlake Road as it kind of comes out toward the, the southern and southwestern part of stamping ground. But stamping ground is about 350 acres in size, 780 people in the population as of the 2020 census. Their annualized growth was about 1.7, 1.8 percent per year. And their average household size is about the same, it's 2.6, 2.7 people per household. So we did sort of a similar analysis that we did with Sadieville. You know, we looked, we, we sort of compared the two. Stamping ground's current urban service boundary could probably accommodate, you know, about 14,000, 15,000 people. And we are proposing, sort of reducing that, as I mentioned, so we can sort of focus on those areas and build sort of from the inside out. So the, the proposed urban service boundary that we have for stamping ground would still accommodate, you know, a population growth up to 9,000 people. And that, we will also plan for other uses, it won't all be residential, obviously, but just sort of preliminary looks say, you know, we'll probably end up with somewhere in the neighborhood of 750 acres planned residential in, in the city of stamping ground. But reducing the overall urban service boundary from about 14,000, or 1,400 acres down to about 900. Did you all have any questions about stamping ground?
Okay.
I moved, moved right along.
Move to Georgetown?
Yes. If I can get it to not skip multiple slides ahead on me. Okay. So stamping ground, or Georgetown, rather, is, is a little bit different. There's, there are some areas where we are proposing to, to add new, new land to this urban service boundary for Georgetown. You know, you can see these areas that show up in the map on, in green are proposed additions. And I'll kind of go through the, some of these in a little more detail. But I did want to note that, you know, there are areas where we heard from the, the Oxford community, for example, that they did not want to be inside the urban service boundary anymore. It really had only been included because it was within the Lanes Run watershed, which has been sort of the eastern boundary of the Georgetown urban service boundary for a long time. Since they, you know, at least nearly unanimously did not want to be included, you know, we went ahead and removed them with this draft. There's also a couple of areas along the eastern side of the urban service boundary where we made some very minor amendments, just to allow it to follow property lines. As far as the other change, the other major changes, if it will advance this slide for me. There we go. We, we did propose some amendments to the green belt. And we talked about this for, for a couple of meetings with our steering committee. For the, for the past, I don't know, 20, 20 years at least, the, the green belt, when you, when you look west of US 25, followed the 820-foot contour. So it's sort of provided a buffer from Kane Run Creek all the way up to the 820-foot contour. And so when we talk about the green belt in this way, the green belt represents an area that, you know, we as, as planning commission would certainly discourage people from even applying for urban, you know, type development in there. And, you know, historically, the planning commission has also stood, stood by that and not allowed urban development in that area. We, there were some areas where, you know, particularly as you moved further to the west, that 820-foot contours didn't really seem to make as much sense as it does, you know, when you're, when you're closer to US 25. Yeah, I can point to, you know, specifically, you know, you can see this area and this one. Previously, they would spike that all the way, almost all the way to, to the bypass, following that contour in, in sort of a practical sense. It just, it didn't seem to, to work all that well. So what we've proposed here, and we talked about this with the steering committee, is these areas along Kane Run. We looked basically at every, we use GIS to look at every point along Kane Run and say, you know, what does it look like for, you know, the border to be the floodplain plus an additional 100 feet? And in those same places we looked at, what does it look like to measure 250 feet from the center line of Kane Run Creek? And basically, at every point for Kane Run Creek, we looked at that and chose the larger of the two. So that's sort of how we established this new proposed green belt buffer, is by looking at those two things, choosing the larger, and then always verifying that, you know, wherever that boundary was, it was at least two feet in elevation above the floodplain boundary, so that, you know, there, there, it would be very unlikely that the floodplain would cause any issues in, in developing the property between the floodplain and, or not between, between the urban service boundary and McClellan Circle. So it's also good for us to note, you know, we talked about the green belt, the urban service boundary line is not, you know, at Kane Run Creek. When, when we establish the green belt, the, the urban service boundary that we're proposing is in, on the inside line of the green belt. So you can see here on this map, the urban service boundary would be this red line inside, and that buffer that we've created between that line and Kane Run Creek is, is that area that we would, that we would expect no urban development to occur on. We would, you know, discourage people from even applying for development, you know, beyond what's allowed in our, you know, agricultural and conservation areas in that buffer. And, and we would, you know, hope that the planning commission and the legislative bodies would also support that discouragement. As far as the green belt on the east side of US 25, that, that green belt buffer is, is largely the same. I'm not even sure if it has changed at all since 1991. If, if we have proposed changes, I, I don't remember them at, at present. But that area has largely remained the same since, since 1991, sort of extending across the railroad all the way over to, to Lyle Road. So that's, that's one of the, the main changes, is we, we sort of changed how the green belt looks. And, and obviously by, by changing that, it changes the location of the urban service boundary. So you can see, you know, along the southern part of Georgetown on this map, it looks like, you know, there's these green areas where we, where we've added new land in it, I guess in a way we, we have by amending that. But it also, on the west, you know, sort of on the far western side, it, it also removed some property where the, the urban service boundary, and then the green belt flipped to the opposite side of Kane Run Creek for, for reasons I'm unsure of. Other areas of note, this is sort of on the northwest side of Georgetown. So if you look at the bypass north of Elkhorn Creek, sort of north of where they've got the, the new high school and, and the new park, we are proposing to include some areas. And we had some questions about this, both at the steering committee and, and at our workshop, because this is one of those areas where we are proposing with a new section of the urban service boundary to actually split two properties. So there's, there's the Wiles property that's proposed to be split, and, and another one that is the, the name I forget. But as far as the Wiles property, it's this larger tract on the south side, and it already had 114 acres that were inside, that were divided from the rest of the farm when they built the bypass. We are proposing to add 319 acres roughly of that property that is outside the bypass with this, with this urban service boundary. And then there would be about 72 acres that would not be inside the urban service boundary, but would still have sort of frontage on, on Lloyd Road. The other property, we're proposing to add about 40 acres and leave about 13 acres out. And sort of the, our reasoning for doing that was, was that we didn't want to extend, if we could help it, all the way out to Lloyd Road. We didn't want to sort of impact the, the rural character of that road and some of the rural residences that, that exist on that road. You know, inevitably, if we, if we extended it out to the, to Lloyd Road, developers would want entrances and access from there, and that would add a lot of traffic to a road that's not really designed to have a lot of urban development accessing it. So that's sort of why we, why we made that choice, you know, in this case, to, to split those two properties. A lot of the other properties leading up to Long Lake that we chose to add are included in their entirety. So overall, you know, city limits for Georgetown is about 11,600 acres. As of the 2020 census, there's over 37,000 people. The annualized growth rate over the last 10 years was about 2.2 people per year, with about 2.5 people per household. When we compare our two urban service boundaries, you know, we are looking to add about 1,100 acres to the Georgetown urban service boundary, even with some of the, the areas where we're removing property. And, and that, you know, if, if the proposed urban service boundary was built out, it could accommodate about 91,000 people. Our, our population projections for Georgetown through 2040 say that, you know, it'll, it'll likely hit about 55,000. So still a lot of extra room in there for, for, for growth, you know, with the, with the new proposed urban service boundary. Some of the expansion is, is really driven by Georgetown's need for, for non-residential land. But when we add, you know, new, larger areas like, you know, 1,100 acres, inevitably, some of the appropriate land uses are probably going to also be residential. And so the urban service boundary, the, sort of the need for the growth is, is, is probably driven more by a need for, for industrial land than, than any, anything else. We also wanted to, to touch on, on this property, you know, because there was a, an, an application that somebody had considered applying, because they weren't really sure whether or not their, their site was going to be included in, in the USB or not. And so I just wanted to make sure we touched on this. This is Eder Lane here on the, on the western side of this property. So you can see on this map, the Orner's Line is, is the 2017 urban service boundary. We've got 25 here on the far right-hand side. And so we are proposing to include an additional 11 acres of that property. I think it is, it's Mr. Dwyer's property. Within the urban service boundary, there still would be about 12.8 that would be within the green belt, just because a lot of that remainder is floodplain. And, and we added that, you know, additional 100-foot buffer from the floodplain. So, you know, I, I think Joe had spoken with Mr. Dwyer via the phone, and, and he made the decision not to apply for inclusion because we were already including a substantial portion of the property.
So is that above the dotted purple line?
Yeah, the dotted purple line is the, the new proposed urban service boundary. So, you know, whereas before, you can see that, that orange line was following the contour.
Right.
As, as we kind of talked about the old green belt line doing, and then jumps up Eder Lane. And, and at that time, I can assume it was trying to follow parcel lines up to where it would cross 25 and sort of match up with where the, sort of the, the eastern side of the green belt was, going back to the 1991 comp lane. Whereas we kind of felt like it would make sense through there, at least through that portion of the property, for it to still continue to follow that buffer we had described from Kane Run Creek up until it reached that next parcel line, where we brought it up to follow property lines across.
So that's why it's not a straight line, because of the creek?
I guess before we get into, I guess, our, our, we have one application to, for inclusion. I did want to, I guess, address also, and I think you all have copies up there, but we did get a letter from the Conservation District with, with some good recommendations as they had reviewed our draft urban service boundary. Obviously, they can, they can present on, on their comments as well. But I did want to note that I believe that we were either sort of supportive of, of the things that they say in here, or, you know, there are things that we think that we have already sort of accounted for, for the most part. Obviously, we, we, we propose always to protect the 100-year floodplain. And, you know, we are, and, and although it's, that's a discussion maybe for later, but just for clarification, we are proposing on the future land use map that we will, we will not show the 100-year floodplain as sort of developable acreage. It won't have a, a future land use designation, you know, like residential or commercial or industrial. It'll just be designated as floodplain. As far as the, the agricultural districts and those being shown on the future land use map, we think that's a really good idea. And, and we have already talked to Whitley about doing that. As far as the, you know, the stream protection, you know, we're, we're supportive of that as well. And I hope our discussion of the green belt here in my presentation may have alleviated some of their concerns about development in the green belt. We certainly would not support any development in the green belt. We support, you know, protection of Kane Run Creek as that boundary. So we do, we do have a single, as I mentioned, we have a single application for inclusion in the urban service boundary. And I've not updated, I guess, this slide or, or some of the others since, since Monday's meeting. So, you know, if, if some of the acreage is, is off, that's, I don't believe that it will impact my recommendation or, or our findings on the, on the application. But there's a property off of Old Oxford Road that's been requested that we, we examine it for inclusion in the USB that wasn't included in the draft. The zoning on that site is A1. The surrounding properties are zoned A1 or R1C, which is a single-family residential. There is water available to the site, but, but not sewer. Access from, from the, the acreage that they're proposing now would come from Old Oxford Road. So this is, I guess, the overall site as, as originally proposed. I think, I think I have it now. They're proposing for it to really just include this area and not the remainder, is, is my So I think one, one of our concerns has to do with, I guess there's a, a couple of ways to address this. We, we have our set of criteria that, you know, we included in that handout that we gave you all. Those are sort of the rules and guidelines that we as staff used to come up with the draft urban service boundary. It's sort of the same rules and guidelines we gave to the steering committee when we asked them to sort of look at our work and give us feedback and comments and things of that nature. One of those criteria is that we, we don't want to, we don't want to come into new watersheds that are not currently served by, by sewer, or, or there are not plans for them to be served by sewer. So when we look at, at this, at the, the site in question, this area that I've sort of outlined in yellow here is the part of the property that is already included in the draft urban service boundary. And it was included because that part of the property is in the Lanes Run watershed and is planned to be served, you know, if it was ever developed by GMWSS. The remainder of the farm, you know, whether it's the whole 300-plus acres, or if it's sort of the reduced amount, is in an entirely different watershed. You know, and I have, in, in the, in the staff report comments, you know, I had emailed GMWSS as I was writing it, just to make sure. And I, I sent him the, the quote here that's on page two to, you know, I asked Chase if he would, if, if this sounded, or just to double check that I wasn't sort of overstating what their plans are. But I said, "There are no immediate plans for sewer to be available east of this boundary. Therefore, planning commission staff does not think it is appropriate to improve these areas within the USB at this time." And, and he was supportive of that. There's not any plans that GMWSS has to, to provide sewer to, to property in, in the Miller Run watershed. Outside of the, the watershed and sewer, Old Oxford Road is, while, while it has been resurfaced recently, is still a two-lane, a two-lane road. Anytime we hear applications for property that is already zoned for development on Old Oxford Road, we hear, and, and probably rightly, lots of complaints from people that live on that road. So, you know, I don't think it would be appropriate to, you know, add new land to the urban service boundary, you know, thereby sort of saying that we think it would be appropriate for this to also, you know, in the near future, be, be rezoned and developed for, for urban uses that would then add additional traffic to that road that already is, you know, more rural in nature than, than urban in nature, and expected to serve, you know, urban-style In general, I just, I don't really find that, that the, the property at this time meets enough of our criteria to really change my recommendation on it. But, you know, obviously, we can, we can hear from the applicant. That's, I think, all that I, that I have at, at the moment, unless you all have any questions for me.
Do I have any questions for Matt? All right. You just point with your finger, can't you?
Thank you, Jones. And I, I bought this.
Ladies and gentlemen, and I bought this property in the eighties, and as a realtor, I've been coming to see you guys quite often, and I heard them say they wanted to increase the urban service boundary to include entire properties instead of splitting through them. So, I have no immediate plans to do anything in the next few years with this property, but I've got eight grandkids, and so, one of these days, they may want to, when nanny gets too old to farm, they may want to do something here, and I'm just trying to lay some groundwork. That's all I'm about. Where the urban service boundary currently cuts through my farm is a big, long ridge, and it's really kind of hard to see where that boundary is. There's no definite boundary to it. There's no natural occurring boundary, and I read in the urban service boundary rules that one thing you wanted to do is to go to some natural boundary so that you, it would be well-defined. So, I originally asked for the whole farm to be included, and I got my feedback from you guys, so I pared that back to just this one corner, which is eighty-seven point six-six acres, runs down to a creek and a lake. As far as our utilities are concerned, Kentucky American's big twenty-four-inch line runs up Newtown Pike, and a feeder, I'm not sure of the size, goes up Old Oxford, but it is on the property. As far as sewer is concerned, Ball Homes is across the road from me with, I think, somewhere in the neighborhood of five hundred houses. They're getting ready to build a hundred and forty townhouses right across the road from me, so I assume the sewer does service that and would be available. Old Oxford Road has been widened down past where this urban service boundary is cutting. I believe it is now widened to right about there, which is more than half of the boundary that I requested. And that is now a good two-lane road that all those Ball Homes and other developments are using. And I would agree that any time that I was to actually ask to be annexed into the city, that I would complete the widening of Old Oxford Road along that area. If being in the other watershed would cause it not to be a situation where I could pump up to the Georgetown sewer, then, of course, that could be denied when I was asked to be included into the city. So, again, just laying some groundwork for grandkids and trying to make sure I've done my due diligence in making this property as good as I can get it, which has always been my plan. That's why I have the request in. I appreciate you guys.
Let me ask you a quick question. The eighty-seven point six-six acres is right across there, but Matt said the bottom portion of it is already in the urban service area?
The top portion. This portion, the eighty-six acres lies kind of takes right about there.
Right.
So, this portion is an urban service.
Right.
And I'm requesting to have this additional.
The rest of it there. So, how many acres is in, already in the urban service area?
I think you guys estimated.
Thirty-three or something.
Thirty-some on.
Okay.
So, it'd be another.
So, another fifty acres.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to say, ladies and gentlemen, but we don't have a lady here with us tonight. I should have said that Mary Singer is not here on the commission. So, gentlemen, what questions do you have of Matt or Ms. Jones? Anyone?
Charlie, I may just say, my feeling would be if it's already got that little section at the bottom, and I'm like all of us, we hate to see anything put in housing and everything else, but we can't stop it all. We're at that time. That's the way things are going to be from now on.
Right.
But anyway, I think under the conditions with that one portion that's just in the corner of it, that probably we ought to think about accepting after where she's wanting to do it. And like she says, she's not planning on doing anything yet a while, and it doesn't suit to do it anyway, because the town's not ready for it anyway.
Right. And although Ball Homes across the road has access to sewage facilities, that was already approved several years ago when the whole development was presented to this commission. And so, they're not taking on any more customers out there right now, and so, as long as you, and you realize that.
Sure.
Okay.
And the, this is every five years, right?
That was kind of my question. How often does it plan on being amended?
This is every five years?
With the top line.
So, if we're looking at being, and I would have to say, I might laugh a little bit. We can't solve everything. I'm sure we could, we have to talk anything that seems like it's gross, gross.
Even an offer.
And if we're, you know, if we're going to be five years away from this, let's see where it's at in five years. Do we have to do this now, you know, and say, well, because if we do it now, we're standing where in the next five years we want this done, right?
Not necessarily in five years from now. The sewage plant still isn't taking on any new customers out here, then.
Right, we don't have infrastructure in place now.
Right.
So, I see that's what Georgetown's done for years, it seems like it's got, we've put all these things back, they've got the infrastructure in place.
Right.
It'd be nice to have infrastructure in place before we get here. That's what.
Well, it's, I understand what you're saying. It's kind of like the chicken or the egg. Does she not?
I'm sorry.
Does she just sit on that property until sewage service is available? Or does she go ahead, or we go ahead and approve this to be included in the urban service area? And then, when sewage is available, it's there, ready to go? I mean, I don't, six of one, half a dozen of the other.
What I was trying to ask is when they determine the sewer ready to go. So, that's the next step down. This is just laying the groundwork for the first step.
Yep.
I will just say, by including it, if we vote to include it, we're saying that this is appropriate for urban development. It's not saying that it'll develop right away, but that we're saying that urban development can and is encouraged to occur on this property. And the issue mainly, I think, is the watershed. It's opening up another watershed to develop.
When it gets developed.
When it gets.
Just by putting it in the urban service area, it doesn't affect the watershed. But when it's developed, it will.
Yeah, when it's developed. But we're saying, you know, we're encouraging, you know, that we're encouraging it to develop. So, we're including it within the urban service boundary, so we would anticipate that it would, at some point, develop.
You're saying that if we do that, it's so hard. What I've seen, once it's in that, the number one argument was in the urban service boundary. And when you do it now, French, it's made this green light all the way.
It's no different than a zone change.
Have you ever added land into the urban service boundary that wasn't in Lanes Run Basin?
Rita, could you please come back up to the.
Yes.
You know, you know the rules.
I don't get up and down sometimes.
I understand. Just stay up there.
No, my question is, have they ever added urban service boundary inland that's not in Lanes Run Basin?
Yeah, and the answer is yes, but not in Miller Run Basin. So, there are three watersheds essentially that are served within the city of Georgetown. So, there's Lanes Run, there's Kane Run, and there's Dry Run are the three, I believe. If there might be a third, I don't.
Stay right amongst the tangle. Okay.
But.
Part of Kane.
Yeah. So, there's three, potentially four. I'm forgetting one, but there are other watersheds served, but there's none east of Lanes Run. So, no area east of Lanes Run watershed is within the urban service boundary or within city limits. So, this would kind of open up another watershed potentially, although there are many, like, south of Rita's property, there's the, you know, the Bell Farm, the Elmwood.
The Offutt Farm.
Elmwood. Elmwood, Stock Farm, there's the Offutt Farm. I know they do not want to be included. So, you know, if you develop north of them, some of the runoff is going to affect their kind of farm operations, and so, that's kind of another thought. We take this next step and jump over to Miller Run, which, I mean, we may, if Rita wants to develop her property, at some point, we may, you know, jump over to that watershed. It would involve likely just pumping the sewer up over the ridge, over to Lanes Run, and then gravity feeding into the existing system, but.
And at that point in time, I'm kind of sorry, you could also just include all of this along the time, like, at that point in time, it would open up.
Correct.
All of it.
I mean, I think that says our staff position is maybe premature, just to, you know, include the area beyond the Lane Run watershed within, with this update. It's just our position, but, I mean, it's obviously.
So, how far up and down Newtown Pike empties into the Miller Run watershed?
All of it. Well, Miller's, Miller Run, and then there's another watershed, Cherry Run. So, Newtown Pike is all in, you know, two different watersheds, all that land.
Okay, but so, from the intersection of Old Oxford Road and Newtown Pike, going back towards Oxford and Cynthiaana Road, that is not in the Miller Run watershed?
It is.
It is. The purple line is the Lanes Run, the edge of the Lanes Run watershed. So, that purple, that purple line. So, the green shaded is all out, out of existing served watersheds.
But you can pump up from Miller Run into Lanes Run if you are developing and going to accept it. And as far as runoff, what little runoff, the rest of my farm, we captured most of that, because it runs down to the bounds of my farm.
That's the high point on your farm, right there. Last month, when we were talking about the townhouse development across the road there at Ball Homes property, it was brought up that there's a proposed development behind it.
Like, across the road from me, stuck again?
Yeah, is that?
What's in your farm, guys? Mintwood, Mintwood Farm?
Yeah, Mintwood Development is, I mean, is that, how far along is that? And they don't have sewer, but I'm sure, I guess, they're in the Lanes Run watershed. Okay.
Yeah, big part of them, not all of it.
Mintwood, Mintwood has preliminary approval, and they got their preliminary approval in around nineteen ninety-eight, maybe a little bit earlier. So, it's, the preliminary is grandfathered, but they haven't moved forward.
I think it's also important to note with the Mintwood one, that their preliminary approval and their zone change follows the Lanes Run watershed boundary. Their preliminary approval does not spill over into the Miller Run.
So, it basically follows that purple line?
It follows that purple line.
Okay.
So, all of Mintwood is going to be over here? I thought they had some up here for like acre lots.
Not that I remember. There is zone change, boundary follows, follows the watershed.
Okay. All right. Any more questions? All right, I will hear a motion one way or the other here.
Should we close the, should we close the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we need to close that before we?
The rest of it is on text and other things. This is all just on the urban service boundary. Yes, sir, yeah.
Okay.
Close the public hearing, and then have your discussion motions and so on.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed, and so, we can have discussion or, and/or motions concerning this inclusion request for the Jones property.
I would suggest, I guess logically, it would be deal with the request, and then, if something's added or if nothing's added, then you have a motion to recommend the new urban service boundary.
So, we have a proposal from Ms. Rita Jones for only eighty-six point, or eighty-seven point six-six acres to be included in the urban service area.
Of which, Charles, thirty-three is already in that.
Of that eighty-seven, thirty-three is already included. I hear a motion either way for anything. Mr. Perkins, without a motion.
Well, without a motion, there is no action.
Okay.
So, when the chair is satisfied that we're not going to get a motion, then you would move on to either adopt or, or I guess not to adopt the recommendation of staff as to the basic expansion.
Any questions? Any motion? Without a motion, then I will go with the recommendation of the staff and say that this request should be denied at this time.
It, in effect, is denied. It's actually officially no action, but in effect, that is a denial.
Okay.
And then, we would get a motion to accept or, again, deny the recommendation of staff on full expansion, you know, the proposed new urban service.
Of the urban service area, except. Well, then, with that, we need a motion to accept the findings of the staff on the new boundaries of the urban service area for Georgetown, Sadieville, and great, stamping
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Vest, second by Mr. Green. All in favor of the staff's recommendation for the urban service area boundary? We'll take a roll call here. Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Shirley?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. And so, the new urban service boundaries have been approved. Next item on the agenda is the agriculture buffers text amendment, and this, too, is a public hearing, so we will open the public hearing.
Thank you. So, just, I guess, a little bit of background on this one. We had gotten some testimony from the Scott County Conservation District several months ago. They had some concerns about how well some of our buffers between urban development and agricultural property were functioning. I think at that time, we set up sort of a working group to look at it. Several of you were on that group. We had several magistrates and the judge on that working group, and members of staff in the Conservation District as well. I think that the basis of their concerns were that, you know, insufficient buffers were having sort of more adverse impacts than we wanted on agricultural property. That increased impact was leading to a loss of productive agricultural land, and so, we wanted to find ways that we could sort of mitigate those impacts. was leading to a loss of productive agricultural land, um, and so we wanted to find ways, uh, that, that we could sort of mitigate those impacts. Um, so, uh, after meeting a couple of times, we came up with some, uh, proposed text amendments, uh, and I'll, I'll go through those, um, here as, uh, we went, we looked at, uh, section four point one-nine of the Dimension, Dimension Area Regulations, uh, for the A-five zoning district, um, and we added some language under item C, um, sort of increasing the, the amount of setback that would be applicable for secondary structures, uh, when adjoining the A-one zone prop, adjoining A-one zone property. So, under current regulations in the A-five zoning districts, it's our rural residential district, um, accessory structures can be as close as twenty-five feet from the property line. Um, that's still largely allowable, um, unless, you know, that's, that setback is from an A-one zone property. We wanna increase that to fifty feet so that, you know, detached garages, sheds, things of that nature are the same distance from agriculturally zoned property as, you know, agriculturally zoned properties have to keep their structures from the property line. This would, this would also apply to things like, like pools and, and other structures like that. Um, it wouldn't have as, that much impact on, on, uh, cluster developments that we see in the A-five district as most times, you know, those are rezoned to A-five and all of the small lots, you know, basically adjoining each other for the most part. Uh, so they would still be able to enjoy that sort of reduced setback, uh, for accessory structures of twenty-five feet. Um, just those ones on the fringe might, uh, have to abide by a fifty-foot setback. Um, we also added some, uh, footnotes and notes, uh, to the Schedule of Dimension Area Regulations. Um, that's, that's this table, that's in your packet. It, it basically, this, uh, amongst other things, this chart sets out, you know, what this, what the setbacks are for structures uh, in all zoning districts, um, and so the changes that we included, uh, made it clear that, uh, for all side and rear yard setbacks, um, for main and accessory structures, that includes sheds and pools, um, that the setback is fifty feet when they adjoin agriculturally zoned property or land. Um, we also looked at the landscape and land use buffers ordinance and made changes in that, in that as well, or proposed changes in that as well. Um, under section six point one-zero, um, we added language clarifying that there needs to be a, a certain level of diversity uh, on developments, uh, when they propose, uh, species of trees. Um, we wanted to make sure that, you know, if somebody's proposing a development plan, they don't just put, you know, all, you know, red maples, you know, three hundred red maples throughout the development. You know, should some sort of disease or, or other pest come along, we don't wanna see developments lose every single tree on their property. Uh, we proposed changes to section six point one-two, uh, which deals with, uh, property perimeter buffering. Um, we basically clarified, uh, you can see in the, the example you have, uh, in your packet. Um, we clarified that all, all urban zones, so residential, commercial, industrial, and office, when they adjoin an agricultural zone, they have to provide at least a fifty-foot buffer. Um, it specifies that there has to be, you know, trees in that buffer as we've always had, but at the request of the Conservation District, we also required those trees to be, uh, at least thirty-five feet from the property line. Whereas before, we would require them sort of on the property line. So that thirty-five feet sort of, uh, prevents issues where, you know, the tree's falling over or, you know, limbs falling, or should somebody somehow, for, for some reason, plant a, a tree that unbeknownst to us is, uh, harmful to livestock, you know, kinda keeps, keeps those away. Uh, we also added notes, uh, in that table preventing, uh, species that are known to be harmful uh, to, to livestock or animals or invasive, uh, from being planted in that buffer. Uh, and it also prevents residential fences from being built into that buffer. So, so the thinking on that was that, you know, if you allow people to extend their residential fences into that fifty-foot buffer, uh, it becomes much harder, uh, for really anyone to police what's going on behind that fence and, and whether or not the ordinance is being abided by. Uh, we... Yeah, I think that... We, we do, as part of this, I should also mention, we do remove, uh, row ten, uh, from that table in, uh, in six point one-two, uh, as it's now sort of unnecessary. Uh, it was previously a buffer, a five-foot buffer, I believe, uh, adj, uh, adjoining where property adjoins the urban service boundary, but since we now have a buffer where it adjoins all agricultural property, uh, that five-foot buffer from the urban service boundary is no longer needed. We added, uh, a six point one-four, if this would flip, to the, to the, uh, Landscape and Land Use Buffers Ordinance. Um, this once again clarifies that the setback for all building structures, pools, et cetera, when they adjoin the A-one zoning district is, is fifty feet, uh, and that is regardless of, uh, of zoning district. Um, it also specifies that when property is not zoned A-one or C-one, so agricultural or conservation, and when that property is developed, uh, the developer is required to put a six-foot tall, uh, no-climb wire, whether that's diamond mesh or other equivalent, no, no-climb-wire fence, uh, along the boundary uh, between that property and the A-one zone property at the developer's expense. Um, so the, the Conservation District was clear that, you know, they didn't care very much about preserving uh, is existing tree lines on those areas. The more important issue was making sure that there was that fence there in place sort of to protect both property owners from the impacts that they might each have on each other. Um, the fencing is required regardless of zone, so in, if you had an A-one zone property uh, and you've got a conditional use permit to operate a business on your property, the fence would be required on that A-one zone property even as well. So if there was a change in use, um, you know, from a residential or an agricultural use even on an A-one zone property, that fencing is required and this addition to the ordinance would, uh, clarifies that as well. Um, that is a fairly quick but, but thorough overview, uh, of the proposed amendments. Um, I'll answer any questions if, if you have them.
With no questions, we will close the, uh, public hearing and, uh, have any additional comments?
Uh, let me just make one. The one thing that came up constantly last, uh, this past two...
Mr. Tango, would you, uh, state your name, please?
Yes, Keith Tango, I'm chairman of the board, Conservation Board. The one thing that kept coming up too, since I had our meeting, is when we go with this, which we see it, see that everything's fine, is no variances whatsoever. Make everybody stick to the point. And that's the, that's the biggest addition that we wanna add to from our point of view on that. Everything else seems to be pretty well.
So you're saying there should be the ability to have variances?
No variances whatsoever.
No variances whatsoever?
Yeah. Because where this is a safety issue basically, in long-term, somebody shouldn't be able to get, get about one thing versus another. It should be equal across the board.
I think it makes sense because you could have multiple developed parcels that are joined the same farm and you, you would want consistency of barrier between, you know, so you have six homes, six developments, you want all the same.
All of them be the same.
Just, just one word on that.
Is that within our...
Uh, well, I would simply say put into the language, uh, that these minimum standards, the particular ones we're talking about, shall not be varied, you know, that the Board of Adjustment may not. I'm not gonna tell you that a court would uphold that, uh, 'cause I really haven't thought that through. Uh, but I would say the odds are nobody will likely file suit to test it. Uh, unless there's some really bizarre set of circumstances, you know, that it just simply can't be done. And, and I don't know that we've got such bizarre, you know, developable property around here. Uh, but if so, a court might say something, but I would say the discouragement, that's probably worth the effort. So I would add, I'd suggest you add that language to it.
The only thing I might add is, you know, in the northern part of the county, there's a lot of A-one's land that's timberland or it's not being farmed. Now, we have the provision in there that the adjoining property can waive the fencing requirement. I don't know if we've... I don't think we took that out, but would you suggest we strike that, the ability to, for the adjoining farm to waive?
I think, I think the way it is is they can waive the buffer, but not, but fence is not applicable by the...
What's the difference between the fence and the buffer? And that's all part of the same thing, isn't it?
They're, they're part of the same thing, yes.
Of course, I've, I've always had a serious problem with either language or, uh, a board interpreting such that neighbors can waive a public rule. I, I, I think that's dreadful. So I don't think that should be in there anyway. Uh, the only thing that should waive anything is if the physical circumstances are such that it makes it unreasonably either, uh, unreasonable hardship, it, it makes reasonable use of property not possible. That's really where a variant should be granted, not, not sometimes just for, you know, convenience or something else.
So what if, uh, just brings us to make you think, uh, like the existing, it exists in the fence roads, got a bunch of old growth trees in it and that building party's, well, we hate to get rid of that, but because of this, we have to bulldoze it down.
Well, now, it exists in here someplace that...
It doesn't have.
To, to protect that, it, you gotta be flexible to get the fence in and, you know, and keep the trees, something like that.
Is that right?
Uh...
I think you're right.
Because clearly, we don't wanna be cutting down old growth trees for much of anything.
Yeah, but it was a fence.
No, we're cutting down trees.
Yeah, because if you go down most of these farm fence roads, these trees are locusts or been there for a while and the first one's gonna come right back down on that fence. So if you're putting a new line, get rid of the old trees or something.
Well, we should be preserving locusts anyway.
Yeah. Or thyme. Berries, you name what you got.
Yeah.
That would be the only thing I'd see where both parties want to leave the fence road. And the guy has a house there that's got twenty acres, and he says, you know, with that fence road there, I can't see all of it. But if you take those trees down, all of a sudden, I've got a clear line of sight for the backyard to everybody. Is that what you're saying?
I say plant more.
Yeah.
Can I make a comment?
Take them out, plant more.
Yeah, but you take them out, it's gonna be fifty years before they grow up.
Yeah.
Before you can't see anymore.
Three years, still more.
To me, I'd go with that. That's me personally.
Yes, ma'am.
So my comment, and this is just farmer to farmer, and Mary, we're neighbors.
Yeah.
Uh, a six-foot no-climb fence or diamond mesh down by the creeks, the floods are gonna take them out the first time that water gets up.
And that was my question, is what about properties that are joined, you know, water boundaries?
So, and, and those things are gonna cost a, a long leg to put up.
But that's the...
How tall is diamond mesh normally, guys?
About sixty.
Right. So you're gonna have to buy a special six-foot fence with a ten-foot post, and how's that gonna work in Sadieville, James?
It's not very well, I'll tell you that.
So are we over?
Well, with that, with that no-climb, you can go to a no-climb wire fence that's used for goat and plums, that courses.
But you still have to have a post a lot taller than the fence, and you're still gonna get it in the ground. And when you're up against rocks in Sadieville, it's a big old problem. And, and you still got the...
Or even harder, yeah.
You still got the problem with when water hits that mesh or that no-climb, it won't go, all the trash
will, will collect, and it'll take that fence out the first flood.
Yeah, it blew.
I don't see an instance where you'd be putting the, the fence across the stream. I could be wrong.
Well, if, if you're property owned, if you're property...
It's only between your residential and, and adjacent farm.
But there are creeks there.
I agree, but...
And, and then my other question, on the buffer, you said, how many feet of trees and how many feet before you get to the fence?
It's a fifty-foot buffer, and they're suggesting that the trees don't land within thirty-five feet of the property boundary.
So we got eighty-five feet, we gotta pay back?
No, no, it's just...
It's all within fifty.
It's all included in the fifty, okay.
It's all in fifty.
Actually. That's, that's my comment, my concern.
I understand.
Sometimes we, we over legislate.
But still, again, if, uh, if that's sold off in small lots and everything, the people that's got the small lots are gonna say, I don't have any cattle, I don't have any, I don't wanna keep in. You really can't afford to put a bulldozer in there and go back fifty or a hundred feet off your own property that you didn't even care about fence being on start with, 'cause a lot of those people in the northern part of the county, they couldn't care less, they've left. It costs too much to fix up anything. So they come to town and get a job and say, I got a place I can walk and hunt once in a while, and that's about it.
Well, the onus of the cost is on the developer, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, not the existing property owner.
Yeah. But they're responsible for half and half between...
Kentucky law requires... Well, I mean, do, does...
So you're putting it on the non-developer too?
But does the fence itself have to be on the property line? You know, that's the thing, if you notice, if it's inset from the actual property line, and I'd have to look at the, the, how the buffer is laid out anyway, you know, uh, I guess it could be, right? Is there anything that says the fence is not allowable on the property line to prevent, you know, the existing farmer from incurring any of the cost of maintenance? How does that lay out, Matt, like my convention?
No, we, the way we talked about it was the, the developer was responsible for allowing that fifty-foot in there and building the fence to protect the, the farm.
Well, here, here's my question, is say some developer who doesn't have the best interest of everything in mind, instead of opting to place said fence entirely on his property, you know, and not burdening, you know, the adjoining farms, et cetera, will then he have to pay for the whole thing? What happens when this person's read everything and doesn't have the best interest in mind and puts it on the property? Now, you know, he has to pay for half the maintenance.
Well, the initial installation will be the developer, period.
Yeah, but ongoing.
But I gotta admit, what about down the road when that, that thing is falling in or a flood's taking it out?
Who's gonna pay for that?
And then suddenly you've got responsibilities.
Well, and then you're up against the Kentucky law that says both parties pay the tax.
Right.
However, but if you set it inside the property owner, that, the old fence remains the property boundary and that is split.
Oh, yeah, that's all fine and good, I'm just saying, but is there any language that says that the property, the fence cannot be on the property line to prevent the adjoining farmer from having to pay for that maintenance of the, you know? They maybe didn't choose for it to be developed and they didn't want that fence anyway and what have you, what have you. So then we got people paying for a fence or being responsible for a fence that didn't want it all to begin with.
I mean, I guess, I don't, I don't think there's, I guess our discussions with, with the Conservation District was that they wanted the, the fence on the property line, uh, that's why we, we wrote it this way. Um, I will say, as far as the cost, we do have it in the proposed ordinance specifying that the developer is responsible for building, for the cost of the fence. Uh, we can initially, we can also make that, uh, a part of conditions of approval. Uh, that way they can state, uh, upfront whether or not they are in agreement with that or not, uh, and then we can sort of hold them to that as part of the conditions of approval, uh, like we would on any, uh, any application.
But if it's conditions of approval, we have an overlook at one time. Uh, we're, it really needs to be the rule, if, if that's the be situation.
Well, I mean, it, it is written in the rule. It is, I mean, it's here in section six point one-four.
That's where it needs to be. If it's merely a condition, the argument is always ripe to be made that what's your authority for that?
Yeah.
Well, if it's a reasonable rule and it's written into the regulations, that's our authority for it. It's a whole lot harder for them to contest a regulation than it is, we've just added this as a condition.
Yes, and I agree. I, I've, I guess, like with many of our conditions of approval, especially with the new rule, uh, I like to make sure that they are in the conditions of approval so that everyone knows that, that it is a part of what they are agreeing to when they, when they, you know, potentially get a development approved.
Oh, yeah, notice, that's wonderful, but it needs to be a rule.
But it needs to be, I agree, yeah.
It, it needs to be the right rule, but it needs to be a rule.
Alright, any other discussion or questions?
Yeah, we are, I mean, this would just be, I guess, a recommendation, uh, on the ordinance and that would go to, uh, the, the different legislative bodies in Scott County, so it's, you know, if you vote for or against it, this doesn't change the rules tomorrow, yeah.
Okay.
Well, if this is going to other legislative bodies, can we, you know, we give our opinion or recommendation, but can we also put language in there, you know?
You can always have a minority report.
Yeah, 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 like the, you know, our concerns being, you know, because state law's the laws above us anyway. We can't say, okay, even if it's on the property line, then the developer pays for all of it, it's, you know, state law. Um, I, I, I think maybe we would, should have some sort of language in there with concern of, you know, what the cost could be to incur a, a, the adjoining agricultural owner, or if there's a way to shield them from that by...
Well, as far as the initial cost, I mean, if that's in the regulation, that's not gonna fall on the ag, uh, the farmer.
But the...
Down the road... Down the road is when that's going to fall on and and then it's going to be falling more unfairly, I would think, not so much there as it is on an individual homeowner who's now got to, you know, share share the expense of taking care of his cattle.
I see, because it.
And especially if it's with a six-foot no-climb, I mean, that's got to be a pretty dear fence. So that doubles the, I think, the concern.
I see, I see what you're saying because if it's just because it's developer paid for it to begin with, the developer may not always, it may not be HOA maintained or, you know, something outside of the homeowner.
If we added up all the HOAs that take care of business.
Yes.
Compared to the HOAs who don't.
Right.
You wouldn't even notice this one for all the ones that don't do anything.
Okay, so this is a recommendation. This isn't law. Before we go any further, I would like to say that too often governmental agencies such as planning and zoning, city council or or fiscal court, people sit back and then after something is enacted, they want to jump up and down and scream about it. But I commend the Scott County Conservation District for coming to us several months ago and talking with us and making some recommendations and then coming back and and further defining their role. I appreciate, I really do, your involvement in protecting what you feel is a very valuable point of income for this cap. Thank you. Okay, with that said, do I have a a motion to accept the staff's recommendation for land use and buffer ordinance? So made by Mr. Garrett.
Sorry.
And second by Mr. Vest. Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Shirley?
Yes.
Again, Ms. Singer is absent and the chair votes yes. Okay, and so that recommendation by the staff passes. Having nothing else on the agenda except for approved projects that we have each month there, is there any questions about any of those from anyone? I'll take a motion to to dismiss. So moved. Just closes.